Yes, sir.
Hello. Ready to get started, everyone? Can you explain the agenda? We just have a problem on the podium.
Father and ever we come again now thinking for life, health, and strength. We come blessed in your name, for your name worthy to be blessed. Fathers, we come to work on this budget of this budget session. We thank you for what you're going to do. We thank you for how you're going to lead us, and we bless your holy name. Father, we ask that when we go through, did you be reminded? If you are not, you won't take this personally. But it's the right thing to do for our sins. Help us, fathers. Lead over from one good degree to another. We thank you for what you're going to do, and outcome of this we do bless you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting Monday, September 8, 2025, 5:01 PM. This is the first public hearing on our fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. Our conference line set up number there is 1-917-900-9022, accent code 32347. This is not a toll-free number, and you may be subject to long-distance charges according to your long-distance plan. But if you're person number of the meeting for public comment, please follow the below instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial * five. The moderator will unmute your laptop at your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an adjourned item will be given three minutes for comment. And comment only speak one time for each adjourned item. Let's see, we will move on to item three for ten approval of the agenda. Second. All right, Commissioner Feigal, let's say goodbye to Commissioner Moody on the podium. All right, we move to this public hearing, item four. The Board should roll the first of two public hearings on the tentative millage and budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026, set for this day at 5:01 PM. Item eight, under four, tentatively adopt the millage for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Item B, tentative adopt the budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Yep, I will. Okay, so really quick, um... So tonight we want to adopt the proposed millage in the proposed budget as tentative, and then we will have our final hearing next Monday. As a refresher of what was discussed in budget workshops, we will start with the preliminary certified values received from the property appraiser for the year 2025. The general fund, the gross taxable value is $1,732 million. The certified value for 2024 was $1,963 million, which is a gross taxable value decrease of $231,59,000, which is 11.77% decrease. For the MSTU, the unincorporated area, the preliminary gross taxable value for 2025 is $1,404 million. The certified value for 2024 was $1,637 million, which is a gross taxable decrease of $233,47,000, which is 14.24% decrease. This shows the proposed millage rate compared to the rollback rate. The board elected to adopt the proposed millage rate, which is the same millage rate as the current year, in the general fund and the MSTU fund, which brings in a decrease of revenue. The current millage rate is 7.2426 mils for the general fund and 1.2250 mils for the MSTU fund, for a total of 8.4676. The rollback rate is the millage rate that would generate the same amount of abnormal taxes as the current year, based on the current, based on the gross taxable values. As a result of the decrease in gross taxable values for the 2025 year, the rollback rate would represent a millage rate increase. If the board would have chosen to go with the rollback rate, we would have experienced a revenue increase because the values decreased. The aggregate millage rate is 8.2356, and the aggregate rollback rate is 9.3835. The aggregate millage rate is lower than the aggregate rollback rate by 12.23%, and that's something that I have to tell you about the year. Based on the 2025 preliminary values, counting by, by keeping the millage rate the same, the revenue generated will be $12,545,223. In the MSTU fund, based on the 2025 preliminary values, by keeping the millage rate the same, the revenue generated will be $1,719,963. In total, by keeping the proposed millage rates the same, it will generate $14,265,186, which is a decrease of $1,958,000. This is an overall of the entire budget. It is revised based on the changes made during budget workshops and a few changes made after. The total budget for fiscal year 26 is $101,315,0218... Oh, 281, sorry. So, things that are normally, that you guys normally ask during budget workshops, this is a list of the current grants that are budgeted, that we have and that are budgeted. So, the grant amount budgeted for fiscal year 26 is $33,875,074. That's what the grants are going into October. We normally have quite a bit of grants once we start the year, and we just amend the budget for that. That is 33.4% of our total budget amount. 8.2% of the budget is legally designated and restricted. 11.8% of the budget are the transfers to the constitutional officers. 26.7% of the budget are reserves, and that leaves 19.9% of the budget that funds the county department outside entities and other funding that's required to be funded. This is a list of the changes that were discussed during budget workshops and then some changes that were made after. So, just going through the list, during budget workshops, the property appraiser reduced an additional 8985. The help department reduced an additional 10,000. Solid waste was reduced by 240,000 for a truck that was purchased this fiscal year. The travel that was reduced by Commissioner English and Commissioner Feigl. The sheriff's office reduction of 320,000, 200,000 of the budget and 120,000 of the work squads. 120,000 was then placed in a county department budget. Emergency management grants were added in total of 154,023, but there is a revenue offset of that since it's a grant. And coenforcement officer, one of those, was moved out of the MSTU into the general fund to be paid out of the boat rent money, and that totaled 19,455. And then after budget workshops, we've had an additional grant that was added for industrial drive, and it's $1.6 million. There was an increase in what was budgeted for some software that the building department needed. And then there are three trucks between animal control, solid waste recycle, and solid waste. They're budgeted for fiscal year 25, but they will not be received until fiscal year 26, and so we have to pay for them out of fiscal year 26, so they were going to be budgeted then. And so, and then, of course, EMS, that starts in January. And so, what I did, and I'll try to explain it, I'll try, I'm just trying to explain to a lot of... So, currently EMS is split, like, half and half, so half general fund, half small county cert tax, right? So, I did it that way for the new year. But there is a difference in the amount because we're going to be paying century, October, November, and December, and not start the new company until January. So, I did January, February, and March with the new company in the general fund, and then the last six months out of small county cert tax, so that it's still six months and six months, if that makes sense. Okay? And so, that added 58,242 to the general fund and 116,000 to the small county cert tax. And with our insurance last week, I haven't been able to make the changes for property insurance yet, and I won't be able to until we get the schedule and everything. But I was able to reduce the general liability because that was a set amount. And so, I went ahead and reduced the department for the general liability, and that was 50,474. So, that left the general fund with an excess of 288,631, which was placed in reserves for capital improvements to balance. And the MSTU fund had a deficit of 218,992. And as was discussed in budget workshops, that was balanced with a transfer from the small county cert tax fund. And, um, this is the ad that will be placed in Friday's paper. That just shows all the funds, and it has to show the revenue and the expenditure with the total. And it is a 0.5% increase over last fiscal year. We have to show that. And then, because, um, there's not a tax increase, we only have to advertise a notice of a budget hearing. And that's what that is. And so, tonight, we need to adopt a vote on the general fund millage, and then vote on the MSTU millage, and then vote on the budget. So, it has to be three separate.
General fund, MSTU, and the overall budget.
Yes, sir.
We're going to do a roll call vote. Yeah, we've got a public hearing, so we're coming from the public. Go up and up, this is a public hearing, so if you want to be in the seats of the public at this time, if we have anyone from the public who have any comments. I don't know why. All right. We'll close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from the board on any of these items?
I'm prepared to make a motion, if you're ready.
There is no comments or discussion from the board?
I don't have the issue, Mr. Chairman, with the millage, but I'd like to speak to the budget when we get to that letter.
Right. So, before we approve the overall budget?
Yes, sir. And I can speak to that. Currently, you're good by the letter. If you want to go ahead with the millage, that's...
Yeah, I think once we approve the millage, the budget is set.
Well, Mr., you have, you can deal with the reserves, I believe, so the millage, we're not opposed or change taxes. Quite content with what we decided.
We're having a discussion at this moment. We'll go ahead and, um, I'm saying, uh, approval on the, uh, millage for the general fund. And, uh... You were prepared to make a motion. Do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
I'm just going to make a motion on the millage, is that...
For the general fund, we'll do that motion.
Yes. My motion is that we accept the current year millage rate.
7.246?
Yes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Feigl to adopt the general fund millage at current rate of 7.246. We have a second.
Thank you.
Thank you by Commissioner Dents. We've got a roll call.
This is going to be roll call vote. Commissioner English.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Feigl.
Yes.
And Commissioner Dents.
Yes.
All right, so...
Mr. Chairperson, just if I may, the current millage, um, it's 7.2426.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yes. All right, well, we're going to, uh, our MST rate. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, accept the current year millage rate for MSTU at 1.2250.
A motion by Commissioner Feigl to adopt our MSTU millage proposal, ready at 1.2250. We have a second.
Second.
Say goodbye to Commissioner Moody. We've got a roll call.
Commissioner English.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Feigl. Commissioner Dents.
Yes.
I do, Mr. Chairman, and it's regarding a couple of these items that were discussed during our workshops, and one of those is the reduction that we've spoken about with the sheriff's office. And, you know, the reason for this discussion is because of the amounts that are basically being reduced and going into the reserve fund. So, I would, I would ask and see if this board is willing to fund what the sheriff's office requested, understanding that we've got this amount. I think the difference in that was, at that point in time, to be able to balance, it was $82,000. Mr. Clark, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Finance Director. And this is just to try to be clear that I don't have a problem in saving funds, and I think that's what, you know, people have asked us to do. But I also understand the issue with the services that we're talking about, and, and I think this can be done while we're still providing the services that the people are asking for and that they need, but at the same time, not doing so in a way that's not efficient or not physically responsive. While we're checking on that, if we could, there's another reduction. If you're, if you're ready, just jump in. But there's a reduction in, in the cemetery maintenance, and I've already had issues going into that. I think it was $7,000, $8,000 that was reduced. So, I just wanted to bring that to the board to see if there was a way, since we had such healthy reserve, that we could fund the maintenance on these cemeteries.
Well, just to clarify, Commissioner Newman, the amount that we, that I reduced in the, on the county side was like $6,700. That's just for...
Less than $8,000.
Yeah, that's just for fuel and expenditures like that, which I think...
Small calls.
Yes. But, um, that is, so, if the sheriff will not provide the inmate labor, then that's where, that's where the issue's going to be. So, even if the board funded the, the $7,000, that is not going to give us the resources that we need to mow everything that we have to mow.
Unless it's within the sheriff's office. Got it. If that amount is, is included, it would fund the small calls so that sheriff's maintenance could continue with cemetery.
So, let me say, so, let me say that differently. So, my understanding is that the sheriff's budget is not funded at the current amount, which is around $9.2 million, that he will not provide any inmates to the county. So, that would be the inmates that Officer Strickland normally utilizes for mowing. That is an inmate for animal control and recycle. So, even if that $7,000 was restored, that we would still not have the inmate labor. So, my concern is, it's, that, that's not going to resolve that. Now, we have budgeted for the two supervisor positions. That is for the Department of Corrections squads, and we can only have two.
Okay.
So, that's not going to...
They're not going to be able to maintain the cemeteries?
No, sir. I don't believe they can. I think we can keep up with, with the, the normal mowing and the maintenance, you know, and, and the groundkeeping that we do, but I don't think we can accomplish everything.
I'd like to comment on that. I'll start with the cemeteries. Since there's such an unknown there of what it would really cost us, and we don't have the labor to perform the cemeteries, then I would say that we not consider that, because I certainly don't want us to have to pull money out of reserves and have somebody else to mow the cemeteries. Perhaps the people that have their cemeteries mowed, they could reach out to the sheriff, and out of his good heart, he may be willing to, to, uh, mow the cemeteries for them. But I don't think that that should be a county responsibility. Since the sheriff has already been doing that, um, he may graciously decide to go ahead and continue doing that on his own. And then, in terms of the sheriff's budget, um, we've, we've gone through this, and we've gone through this, and we've gone through this. And so, we decided he didn't reduce his budget himself, so we've had to do it. And as far as I'm concerned, that sticks. And, and again, I've said it many times, and I'll say it again, that we were assured right here in this very room by the undersheriff, Marty Thompson, that services would not be interrupted. So, um, I take him at his word for that, and so, I'm, I'm not real concerned that services will be cut. And I'd like to make another comment, too. You know, if we at home, when we have to cut our budgets at home, we look for things that are less important to cut. We don't go, and the first thing we do is, is, uh, cut our, uh, cut our lights off, okay? Because that's an essential service to us. We look for other low-hanging fruit that we can cut, not the main thing. And I kind of equate that to the sheriff's department, you know, and look for something that's low-hanging fruit instead of cutting the electricity off, so to speak.
Did you have those numbers?
So, are you asking about what their initial request was?
Their last year's funded amount.
Okay.
I believe nine million, generally.
None, yes.
In that consideration, because of the reductions, which, which would do away with the reduction of services.
So, that would be, it would depend, I guess, on the 120. But either way, the 120 is budgeted, so it would be 200,000. It'd be adding back in $200,000. So, the overall budget amount would stay the same. It would be reducing the capital, your reserve for capital by $200,000, the increase in your...
But that's, that doesn't have the same effect as to what would have to be funded out of the general fund to reach there. I believe there was an $82,000 deficit.
So, Commissioner Newman, I think what you're talking about is when the sheriff's office presented their original budget, I think it was 9.5... It was 9.5. So, there was an increase. Right. They asked, there was an increase, and so, during budget workshops, that increase was reduced to their current year budget, and then reduced by the 200,000, and then the work squad amount. So, what you're referring to, Commissioner Newman, is they, when they made their presentation, they did reduce $100,000, and the Department of Health reduced 10,000. So, at that moment in time, it was an 81,375,000 deficit. That's what I think you're referring to.
That's correct.
That's what he's talking about.
Yes, ma'am. So, I'm just trying to say the difference between, well, the board would have to fund at the deficit of the general fund, I believe was $82,000, thereabouts.
81,375 at that point in time.
Right.
So, that's probably...
We had more deficit then, so I don't have that.
But I think what he's asking is if his, if the sheriff's, now, help me, if the sheriff's budget was funded at 9.2 million and some change, what would the deficit be?
Or wouldn't be one.
Okay. I think that's his point. So, instead of money going into the reserve...
Because it's funded back at the current, current year, which, so it's adding back either, it's adding back 320,000. The 120 is already budgeted in the county department, and then 200,000, because the deficit is, the, there's an excess of 288,631. So, that would leave an excess of 88,000.
I mean, there would still...
Because there's, there's a lot more changes that happen.
Yes, ma'am. So, there would still be a surplus of 88,000 to go into the reserve fund. I see. And, and that wouldn't cause any of, of the concern with the cemetery maintenance and the rest, because you'd be using inmate, county inmate crews. Is that, is that fair?
If the sheriff continues to provide...
Right.
The correctional officer and the inmates. And I can't speak for him, but if he continues to provide what he's providing until the end of September, that would allow for that additional mowing and groundskeeping. And I'm assuming we would still get inmate assistance in animal control and recycle.
And you still would have an $88,000 surplus. Is there anybody on the board that would be interested in that?
I feel like, uh, if, if he does stop the inmate use, we're going to end up spending a lot more money getting the same job done if we don't do it.
Right. I mean, that's, that's why I'm saying, so we still would have an $88,000 surplus by funding the previous year's budget in the sheriff's office, and we could still get the same services for that funding.
If we had a guarantee of that, that they're going to do it, but I haven't heard that.
Until he gets mad, we don't know if that's a guarantee or not, but can you speak to that, that it's going to potentially cost us a lot more money?
I mean, where did the, where did the cemetery board come in at, anyway? Who, that, when did this cemetery board even start? What happened before the chair started mowing it with his individual crew?
Uh, I think, well, as long as, I think it's kind of morphed over the years because, and we've gone through several iterations of what we've done to get the cemeteries mowed. We, we contracted, now, we, you, you know, different services. So, we've been able to maybe swap some things around to make sure that our public properties are maintained and that the, you know, everything is mowed. Um, we have one crew that, um, one, a state inmate that we use for construction, for cleaning the bathrooms, for mowing. So, there have been times that that crew has been stretched thin, and so, for years, I believe Officer Strickland has been providing some assistance. Now, you remember, several years ago, we had a contract with the sheriff to utilize county inmates, but we never could seem to get a full crew because of different reasons. You know, they, they were there for, you know, sometimes it was just two inmates. For whatever reason, they could not leave the jail. So, several years ago, we decided to go into contract with the Department of Corrections because we feel like there's more of a guarantee that we'll have the number of inmates needed to accomplish what we need. So, um, I think it's just been a natural progression as we have more public spaces to maintain, that we have, you know, that Mr. Strickland, Officer Strickland, has been available to help us. And so, at this point, he, he mows, you know, he helps us quite a bit. And there are other services that they provide, you know, and not all the time, but there may be times... and not all the time, but there may be times that we need trash picked up. And, you know, he's the one who takes a crew up and picks it up, or whatever we need. He's always been very gracious. But I think the original discussion was that if we are looking at ways to reduce our budget, that that was an opportunity. So, you know, I think the board would, you know, you, it's it's your decision if you want to continue that service or not. But my concern is, is that our one inmate work squad will not be able to keep up with everything as often as we do now. And and maybe that's the level of service we go to.
Mr. Sheriff, I can promise you on in my district that I'll get a lot more calls if we're unable to keep the sides of the roads mowed and other things that do that do versus cemetery maintenance. My, people in my district would much rather have their roads maintained, the sides of the roads maintained than a cemetery taken care of. So, I think that'd be a lot more calls if we if we do that.
We took on cemetery mowing?
Yeah. If we ask those, just the few people that we're gonna be left with to maintain, and you heard her say that it's hard for them, it's hard. It's gonna be difficult to keep up now. But, I mean, we'll do the best we can, but we sure don't need to add cemetery maintenance to that.
You got a world, you got a world of mowing that Mike did at boat ramps and parks and all kinds of stuff.
During the festivals and all those things, getting leading into those events. There's a host of things that contribute, that are, that ways that he's, his crews are contributing to to, you know, the benefit of our residents and the county as a whole.
And when somebody dumping a bag of trash out on the road and it scattered all down the road, almost one that was called Mike, and they go pick it up, and...
Well, so, I mean, to be fair, I I could, might call Mike, I might call Hank, I might call Gary. It's just whoever we could get out there.
I really just want to go back to this whole budget. We asked everyone to reduce their budgets.
That's right.
Let's think it's back where we started. We asked everyone to reduce their budget. And the only ones that did, one of the sheriff's partner, of course, they got mad, stormed out, you do what you gotta do, we'll do what we gotta do. So, they left it in our hands to just pick a number. The number was 200,000 dollars, and then they said, hey, if you don't give me this, you can take these boat crews. Okay, that's another 120,000 dollars. We are not here to reinvent the wheel. Uh, we will figure it out if that's what we have to do. And, uh, I've talked about this over and over and over. So, I stand where I've been for, since all this nonsense started.
Sheriff, uh, to respond to the boat ramps and all the other places, just remember, it wasn't our decision to cut that out, okay? We did, we were not the ones that asked for that to be cut out. The sheriff made that decision, I think, out of retaliation because he didn't get what he wanted.
My, those, they must lost their jobs, the, the...
You can put that aside, what what he did, and think about the reality of it. All that stuff is still going to have to be done.
And we can put aside, to say, there's there's decisions that we still can make. That's that's why I brought it to this meeting. And and I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel. But in understanding where our funding options are at, and to understand the services, all these responsibilities that we're still gonna have to provide for, we've got a mechanism and a path to get there that still puts a surplus in our reserve and still provides our services in the ways that, to my knowledge, are successful. I mean, they're successful in the sense of all the residents that have reached out to me saying, these are things that are not gonna be done. These areas that are mowed, the community centers, the the cemetery, all these, you know, festivals that we get ready for. So, so these are all services, and these are gonna be reductions. Or they're gonna be a different challenge in the sense of how you can get to that point, if you can get to that point, and I don't know that you can. So, I it's not a reinvention of the wheel, Mr. Chairman. It's it's an evaluation, given where our revenues are currently, that we can still provide this service. We can look at this option here. And I, I'm assuming that in funding what the previous plus was, I don't know if the finance director can speak to that in in respect to the sheriff's office, but it was my understanding, unless I'm recalling that in an error, that if we were able to fund the previous budget for the sheriff's office, that they would be able to continue to provide all these services. So, I'm just still looking at this option here where this board can decide to fund the sheriff's budget to continue these services as far as the maintenance and the needs and upkeep that are provided. And we're still working on placing a surplus in in the general fund.
We can do it cheaper than we can, I guarantee.
Well, that that's the thought that I have as well. So, I mean, it's not, it's not a reinvent the wheel. I just, I just want to be clear about that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I mean, kind of our reinvent the wheel, but don't matter. Give the 120, 20,000 dollars back for two more crews, tell them to get, go get on with it. I mean, 120,000 dollars, tell them to go get on with it.
Well, that would just be to provide the correctional officers for the two state crews. But I don't, I mean, I'm not trying to speak for the sheriff.
Oh, no, I mean, we didn't quit. The sheriff's wanted to quit.
Right, yes.
We didn't quit. Well, we just asked for a budget reduction, and my, no one's really lost their jobs.
Well, and to answer the question about about the cost, I I do not have a cost for cemetery maintenance, but, and I do not, the only cost I know that we may be looking at if we run the inmate work squads is if I have to buy a truck. Because we are waiting for some trucks to be transferred from the sheriff um, to to the county, but I I don't know where we are with that. So, if they aren't transferred, then I may come to the board and say we need a truck.
We're gonna wait on that for some time, aren't we?
Yes.
We're going to buy motors, mowers, and weed eaters, maintenance, all that. It's gonna be, it's gonna be...
It can be a lot of sunk costs and equipment that's that's currently in place to contend, to to have this, you know, potential for funding and not have to create more sunk costs with trucks, mowing equipment, whatever it is. The sunk costs are there that we wouldn't have to incur to utilize a, a, you know, percentage of this potential reserve funding to be able to keep the service going forward for the people. That that's, that's what I'm trying to see, if there's a way that this board can can visualize that and and if we can accomplish that.
At the end of the day, if we need to, if we're gonna have a little surplus, we can, we can take care of our mowing. And I don't want this board to be held hostage to somebody that you don't know in six months, if they get mad, they're gonna pull it. Because this was threatened a couple of years ago, right, LaWanda? This was, this was threatened when we were not even talking about budget to pull these crews. So, I don't want to be tied to someone that we may get it, we may not. I just assume that we that we take care of that mowing ourselves. We have the ability to do that, and then we know it's gonna get done.
Commissioner, I I think the issue with the abilities are the the continued costs you're gonna incur. I mean, we wouldn't have to purchase a truck and all the trailer and all the equipment that's already in place.
You're right. We shouldn't have to, excuse me, there's just...
But I'm saying, those things are in place now. That that service can continue, and and that's, that's why I'm bringing that to this board. So, I just see, and and again, I've been contacted in in all sorts of ways in respect to how the residents are concerned with this this reduction. So, it it is going to be a reduction of service. And it's very, very concerning that it may be a reduction in services, and you may wind up spending more money, but you may not get the same service because of limitations, whether that be with the inmates or all the other unknowns or sunk costs. So, I I don't know.
So, I think the...
May. You keep saying may. That's the key word there, may. It may, it may, it may.
Well, I'll just, I'll just say, I I believe it is going to be a greater cost. I believe you're gonna wind up with a reduction in your service, and you're gonna pay more money for what you get, and you're not even gonna break even. That's what I believe. Now, I certainly could be wrong, and I hope I am for the people's sake. But these are the concerns that that I'm not just coming up with on my own, but that the residents are contacting me about. So, those are the things I'm trying to see and understand. So, I I have heard from Commissioner Dempsey. I I don't know where you stand, Commissioner. What's your thought?
Well, I know what I heard from, from the discussion. It wasn't encouraging, what I heard. And I've heard this year, and I heard it two years ago, so... Hard for me to sit up here and think. I can't think for anybody else. I would have to have it coming from the person themselves. This is what will happen, and this is what will be. I haven't heard that yet. The last word I heard, take what you need or do what you have to do. So, and I think that's what we tried to do in this budget, do what we had to do and not depend on somebody else. I do know every time you give anything that you, you're chairman of or captain up to somebody else, there's a possibility of something going wrong. I don't have, that, the sheriff has the ability to do it, but he haven't come back and told us he, that's what he would do, you know? I'm hearing you talking, and and it sounds encouraging, it sounds good, but I don't know how the sheriff feels.
Can we get a word from the sheriff? Do you have time? Or would you take time for that, Mr. Chairman?
I mean, that's fine. I mean, I can, we, we've discussed this all the way up to the last hour. I mean, I'm worried about that, but I mean, you don't wanna wait, I mean, I don't want to wait around.
Do you want me to call him?
If we could get a word from him, I mean, I think it'd be worth the time.
I can tell you, my mind is made up, and I'm not gonna change my mind. So, remember that anybody can say it's gonna change my mind. I know what we've been through. I know what four other constitutional officers did. They put the pen to paper, and they came in and they helped us. And so, my mind is made up. I'm not changing my mind. I don't care who comes up here and talks.
I mean, that's where I'm at. I mean, I, I discussed it.
Would you, um, would you mind if I reached out to him and see if if he could come, what that timetable would be?
Sure. Or if he can call in to give, I mean... As long as we can, we can give some indication as to what we could expect.
I I, I just want to say, I mean, what you're, you're approving the overall total budget, so I don't think that's gonna change. If you're gonna, if you do decide to give him the money or change money, you're gonna be moving the money around, and I mean, that's, that's fine. You can make that decision tonight or by next meeting or whatever, but...
That's right.
Um, I mean, that's not gonna be a problem right, right now. But I mean, you...
You have to tell them what their budget is after Monday's meeting. So, it's not gonna change the total budget. I do have to advertise this budget, but that doesn't necessarily mean um, it can't change, because front Monday's meeting is a public hearing also. So, um, if you need him to come and whatever on Monday, I mean, it's whatever, but it's not gonna, I mean, the the total budget amount is not gonna change.
Can you put that back on the screen? The, what you're gonna advertise? Does that, does that working out by what each office is getting?
It doesn't.
Or is it in the, maybe in the thank you?
It's, um, what each office is getting and then this that I gave out. Is that what you're...
The one that you're advertising in the paper. Oh, is this one?
Is it this one, Gary?
Yeah. So, that's not gonna change either, other than you just can give the money from one pile to another. So, that's up to you, I just want to make...
So, before we all to approve on our overall budget, it's not the overall budget, if I'm wrong, we're looking at 101,000, 101,815,000, 200,000. We have a motion to approve this overall budget. Motion to object, and fee, we have a second. Thank you, Mr. Dempsey.
Roll call, roll call, vote. Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pigel?
Yes.
Mr. Dempsey?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, the next, second and final public hearing will be like we talked about, next Monday, 2015, 2025, 5:01 PM. And then that that, um, budget summary will be advertised in the newspaper on Friday, September 12, 2025.
All right. I would want to, uh, uh, the board consider approval if you're having, if there's anywhere emergency management for it.
With the board's decision to transition emergency management from the sheriff back to the board, um, we have to consider the current emergency management director. So, this is considered a merger of accounting function. Um, he would not have to go through the whole recruitment process, but pursuant to Florida State Statute 12574, the board must confirm any appointment of a department head. Also, um, he is asking to negotiate his salary. So, um, the way that emergency management is currently structured with the sheriff is that the two positions of emergency management director and coordinator have been combined. Um, and he is, um, and he is paid accordingly, plus he waives his health insurance. Um, and be, because of our own personnel manual, I can only negotiate halfway of the current salary range for emergency management director. And he is asking for more than that. So, what he is proposing is that he, um, he performs both job functions with a higher salary and that he waives health insurance.
Tell us what the current salary is.
His current salary is, I believe, 70, is it 70,000, 80, 70,000 dollars? Seventy, seven zero.
What's your rating, since you work with him?
Um, 48,900 to 70,911 per emergency management director. Emergency management coordinator is 32,864 to 47,642. And I would, I would say that is, that is a lot of work for one person to do.
That's my only, my only concern. You know, I think that Danny will do a great job. I have no, no concerns about that at all. I I do have concerns about putting that kind of load on one person. And I know he'll do his very best to try to do that, but I don't know if it's realistic or not, LaWanda, that. You have to give us some guidance on that. Um, you know, you don't wanna put something on somebody and set them up for failure. So, I...
So, when I was hired...
I think Danny can give us some additional insight, and then we can talk about what some other counties do.
So, when I was hired, you know, there was two people before. And when we looked at the budget, um, when you have two people, you can't put money back into the people where, what I would like to do. You know, I'd be money to buy things, the entire end budget is ate up. So, when I came in, I asked, could I try to do it by myself? That way, we have additional funds to put back for our people for protection, to buy supplies, to buy things that we may, you know, still want to be prepared. And so, that's why I said, I wanna do it myself. That way, I have to learn it, I know it. And we have additional money to put back into our taxpayers' hands. And so, um, you know, I've been there almost, almost a year. I mean, I know it's, it's a lot, but I've also got the education to be able to take care of it. So, um, I do not recommend hiring another person. A lot of counties our size have one, one person. So, that's why I would say go with one, one person. So, that way, we have additional money to put back into buying.
I've got a couple of questions. You you recently had about, what, four people that were helping you?
I did, yes, ma'am.
And what what did they do?
So, we had one that was helping me with... So we had one that was helping me with grants. We had one that was helping with SERC. And we have a maintenance that was helping with maintenance. And then one who was going back over some of our plans. And so we did have two major plans that we had to turn into the state, our LMS and CNP. So it was good to have them to go ahead and get those. So that was gonna be like a major hurdle for us. You know, it would have been hard, you know, possibly by myself to do that. But you only have to do that once every five years. A lot of EMs, when they only have one person, they'll contract that out. It can cost fifteen, you know, fifteen to thirty thousand. We didn't, we did that in-house. So yes, I mean, it was definitely good to have them.
But you could have done it, could you have done it?
Yes, ma'am, I could have done it.
Let me just ask you this, 'cause, you know, I'm okay with you having the job. Okay. But I just want to make sure now, if something comes along, and we have some other disasters and all, and this proves to be too much for you, you're taking it home with you, you can't sleep at night. I know what it is to be overloaded. Just, LaWanda.
I think she was telling that.
And if that was your house, it would like you. If that happened, I promise you. But, I mean, all seriousness, though, if it comes to the point, and you have to say, look, I have the best intentions, I'll try to do it, but I can't. Then do we take that salary back that he's been given to hire him an assistant? Have you talked about that? Have you talked about that?
We have, and I would agree to that.
You would agree to that?
Yes, ma'am.
But I'd also say, LaWanda, per discussion, I'm okay with you. I just roll off the drive, and I'm not gonna cut what your salary is now, though. But you can't put it out, put it that you're gonna pay this additional money, and he's not gonna take the insurance. Could you imagine at your next meeting? Additional accounting, so they don't care the insurance is gonna be coming to that ten thousand dollars, because they don't care the insurance, too? I just, I just, I'm just saying.
Are you saying that if other people that don't carry the insurance may come and say, I don't take any, I want an increase?
If I worked for the county, and I was making forty-five thousand dollars, I might carry the insurance. And you may, I'm just saying, I'm just speaking out with everyone. Make a decision like this. You know, Bill is more than that, but the ones that don't carry the insurance are gonna say, well, I want ten thousand more dollars on my salary. I'm just telling you, it's what's gonna happen. I just. And again, on the job being, I would have been emergency management director and a coordinator, this coordinator position was eliminated until just recently, if I'm wrong. I'll correct if I'm wrong. You know, the day-to-day portion is, you know, probably not too overlooked. But in the middle of an event, leading up to an event, it's, but we are all a question.
And that's where we're questioning the state. The state will provide those additional people. You know, they'll bring a high MTTM like they did before. So I won't be there by myself. The state will give us plenty of people to come in and help support it.
I want to just go back, 'cause, you know, the wheels are spinning. So if it's ten thousand dollars, I guess another way that you might could look at it and say, are we gonna give that ten thousand dollars to the insurance company, or are we gonna give that ten thousand dollars to the employee? Does that make any sense at all?
I will not disagree that, when it comes to health insurance, that depending on how each individual employee, the choices that they make may result in one employee actually getting more benefits than the other. So it's never been apples to apples. And I don't think that it's in everyone's, in our insurance group as a whole, for people to start waiving insurance, because then that could affect the way our group performs. So I don't disagree that that could create a feeling of disparity, you know, if we don't offer that to everyone. But I would say, you know, that's just the way it is. People who have families get additional benefits that those who don't receive. Just because, you know, and they may need it more. I mean, you can look at it so many different ways.
Let me figure, it's quite close to what, eighteen to twenty thousand is kind of. So if you back that out, you know, it puts you at a much lower salary if you take off the insurance.
But the insurance is not a deciding factor for me.
No. I don't have a growing day coming up here, coming on board the county with the emergency medical. Well, I mean, obviously, let's push some of the certifications and, so, you know.
And he has until June 30th of 2026, per State Statute, to become fully certified, and we feel like we're almost there, depending on how you interpret the statute. And the current statute does not have any true ramifications. It doesn't spell out, if you don't do this, then you don't get your grant money. But that is, I mean, that is a concern. So any offer of employment needs to be made contention upon Danny reaching this goal and working with the state through that. Which we've been working on.
Yeah, I mean, we feel like we meet the letter of the law, but there's some additional stuff that I can do to make sure, just to sum it up. So that is just some additional classes that we're gonna do just to make sure.
And that's the FIFA certification. And he actually met with someone last week that can help him, you know, basically check off what he would need to do. And then there really wouldn't be any question.
Total emergency management budget, you know, we use county, five, three, seven, something.
It's around two hundred thousand.
Around two hundred dollars, yeah. So we're talking, two hundred thousand is made up of really more salary and benefits, right? So to speak, I mean, I don't.
So.
I mean, as far as supplies, I mean, that's, we have events, that's even supplied by being a lot. We need a lot of our resources start coming in, so.
Correct. So the two hundred, give or take, two hundred thousand dollar budget is really meant for Blue Sky's day-to-day operation. If we were to have a local state of emergency, then Ms. Danielle would set up a special account, and anything that was reimbursable, potentially reimbursable, would be charged at that account.
And one thing to note, you have to spend a hundred and fifty thousand on it. We can't carry that money over, so.
Right.
That's why we make sure to spend and get every dime we can for our county.
So, Mr. Chairman, LaWanda, with the seventy thousand, and then you were gonna, the idea is to add how much for the other person? Were you asking for eighty-five? Is that what it was?
He was asking for eighty-five thousand.
Okay. So I'd like to make a mention, then, that we hire Danny Glover to be our emergency management director, and eighty-five thousand, and then that you finish up the necessary training and things that you need, and that if this becomes too much, that you'll be willing to forfeit that extra fifteen thousand to somebody else to come in and help you.
It'd be the same thing, too. I think it's only fair, 'cause I'm on my wife's insurance. So she works for the VA, so if she wanted to work for somewhere else, and we said, hey, we want to get the county's insurance, then it would only be, that would be deducted back out of my salary. I think that would only be fair. So that would not be, I would not put that on top of it. That would not be.
So if I can clarify, so his offer letter, this would be contingent upon if, you know, becoming fully certified by June 30th, 2026,
Yes.
and he would not be eligible for the insurance unless he reduced his salary.
Yes.
By the appropriate amount?
Yes.
I said, that's a bad deal to make, not, nothing against you.
I have, I have.
And I'm all in. But anyway, we have a motion on the table, so.
Did you want to make a suggestion, then?
All right. Well, I mean, self, I just, I would approve the current salary. I'm not into, I wouldn't make a deal that if you couldn't handle it, then we'll back the salary out. Or if you decide you want the insurance, then we'll back the salary out. It's messy. That's messy. For me, that's messy, so, you know. But to their own, everyone's got their own thoughts.
I want to give you a chance.
I'm, but I mean, I'm, nothing against Danny. Danny, I'm all in for Danny to come on.
Right.
Go over to do the work.
Right.
Even at his current salary, I don't even want to reduce his salary. I say that motion. Got a motion by Commissioner Feigl to bring Mr. Glover on as the emergency manager director at eighty-five thousand. I say goodbye to Commissioner Moody, y'all a favor. Note for me, just for the reasons that I stated, I'm nothing against Danny Glover at all.
I'll go on with it. If you back it up, if it's too much for you.
Yes, sir.
Or you go to another one to the insurance, to bring the sheriff back in.
And I'll have to run this by an employment law attorney and see if there's something. I mean, if she says we don't need to go down that road, I'll, we'll go from there.
Yeah, if it's too much, my wife calls, yes. Anyway, if it's too much, she'll be calling you, Julie, no.
You did give her the bull's.
All right.
We got a pass in four to one.
Hope y'all don't see me, 'cause that's a, it's a boring job.
We don't want to see you, let me do this.
Let me, we have come.
There's something coming.
Thank y'all, appreciate it, thank you.
All right.
May I make a comment real quick?
Sure.
I just want to let you know, I spoke with the sheriff. He said he would be here Monday. I request Mr. Dents.
The sheriff would be here Monday, you, nobody would be here Monday. I would get a motion back, Commissioner Feigl, to, I think, I second.
Yes.
Say goodbye to Commissioner Dents.